All right, it is six o'clock. I'm going to call the Committee of the Hold to Order for June 14th, 2025. Clerk Boat, could you please read the roll?
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Pallivinoglu.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
All members present.
All right, next we have the minutes. Vice President Carter.
I make a motion to approve the June 23rd minutes as presented.
Okay, we have proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Saying none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next, we're on to public comment on agenda items. If there's anyone here from the public who wishes to speak, now is your time. Please come up to the podium and can you state your name for the record? I see no takers. All right, then we are going to move on to item five, which is a presentation by the Capitol Regional, or Capitol Area Regional Airport Annual Update. And we've got Nicole Noel Williams here. Yeah, if you want to step on down. And then make sure that the green light is on, on the microphone, and start whenever you are ready.
Hi, everyone. How are we doing? Good, great to be with you tonight. And thank you for the opportunity.
Is the light on?
It is. But thank you again for the opportunity to be able to come in, provide some updates about what's going on at the airport. The city's been great partners in a handful of these key projects, so I'll highlight those as we go through. But I think I've got the clicker, but I cannot see the presentation, so I don't know how that'll work. Okay, so on to the next one. It's the Airport Authority Board. We own and operate two airports, so it's here in the Lansing Airport, as well as the Mason-Jewett Field. And our board is made up of three from Ingham County, and three from the city of Lansing, and ex officios in Eaton and Clinton County. And if you weren't aware, we actually have property in all three counties at the Lansing Airport, so there's a nice collection of involvement with all three counties in different areas of projects. So on to the next slide, to highlight some of those key priorities, it's looking at how do we retain and expand passenger service, both domestic and internationally. We're focused on increasing cargo tonnage, land utilization, as well as looking at that corporate and general aviation at the Lansing Airport. If you go on to the next slide, it is a highlight of the Lansing Airport, making sure you're aware, it's about a billion-dollar economic impact to this region. So I like to talk about how we at the airport, we've got 43 employees that are part of our budget, but there's actually over 700 people that are employed at the Lansing Airport. So think of UPS, think of the airlines. Many folks, when they're traveling, they think it's actually the Lansing Airport that's maintaining the airline ticket counters. That is not the case. Those are airline employees, those that are fueling the aircraft as a separate company, your TSA, your FAA. So for us at the Airport Authority, our goal is to maintain the existing facilities, look at how we can support the growth of those corporations that are there, and creating opportunities to see future growth, and making sure that we've got the infrastructure to support all of those areas. Lansing is also a key location for UPS, and has been for years. 63 million pounds of cargo come in and out of the Lansing Airport, so that's second to Grand Rapids, and to, or third to Detroit, and then Grand Rapids. But that central location has been beneficial for UPS, and the growth of UPS facilities within this region ties directly into the services that they have available at the Lansing Airport. On to the next slide, Mason-Jewett Field, little over 81 aircrafts that are based down at Mason-Jewett. I think one of the key things to highlight down in Mason, and I'll go into a little bit more detail later, is, is how are we supporting the future aviators, the future employees within aviation industry, whether it's pilots, mechanics. It's important that we play a role at the Lansing Airport to help support the future of aerospace manufacturing, or aerospace opportunities with careers. And Lansing Community College holds their aviation mechanics degree program down at our Mason-Jewett Airport, so I'll highlight a couple of key points a little bit later in the presentation. On the next slide, I'll mention some of the existing services where we're at, domestic and internationally. I'll provide some updates on some of that workforce development, looking at both that corporate and land development. Where are some of those projects that we're working on today that are under design, what our timeline looks like for those projects? How are we thinking about future air mobility, thinking about electric aircrafts, drones? We've got to be a player in that central location in the state, so we're taking efforts to support those needs, as well as a master plan. So we've got to make sure that we've got our, our planning for the airport itself is approved by the FAA with, were designed for the airport, and some of the key projects that we look at moving forward, all have to be vetted and approved from the federal government through FAA. On to the next slide, I believe we should be at the Delta slide, right? So we're looking at some of the passenger services. So we've got flights going to Detroit with Delta Airlines, and American Airlines with service to Chicago, as well as Washington DC. And I know I've seen a few of you here that have used the services on a pretty regular basis to DC, as well as other markets and destinations. And that's what it's all about. If we turn around and we look at these airlines as being a small business, and we support the small business, we're going to see them grow, we're going to see more opportunities, more destinations come to the table. So we're excited about these long-term partnerships that we have with both American and Delta Airlines, and continue to push these carriers to look at other opportunities, more frequency, larger aircrafts. So for example, we just secured additional larger aircrafts, we'll dual cabin on American Airlines back and forth to Chicago. So those customers throughout the region that want to fly in a first-class-type environment on American, they can now do that with the flights that we have provided by American Airlines. But all of these markets, both of these carriers are key with the community. When we're looking at Michigan State University, the state of Michigan, the insurance companies, the manufacturers, it's all about getting these organizations to think and look at booking Lansing first, before we get on the road and using services alternate airports. About a $200 lost savings when you start thinking about that drive down to Detroit. So think about your drive down, that being reimbursed, your time, you're reimbursed for fuel, you're reimbursing your employees for that parking that's also associated there. So looking at the bigger picture within your organizations, and those are some of the key things that the Mid-Michigan Business Travel Coalition stays focused on. Next slide highlighting our Breeze Airways service. This service is, started last year with nonstop flights to Orlando and to Fort Myers. Orlando remains as a year-round market. Fort Myers is, starts in October and runs until late April. And then we just announced nonstop service with Tampa. So Tampa will be added to the schedule also in October. If you haven't had the opportunity to fly in Breeze Airways, you think of other low-cost carriers that maybe you've flown on, think of like an Allegiant, or even Avelo, or Spirit. It's a one-cabin-type aircraft for all of those carriers. So you're sitting with the same seat pitch, you're sitting with the same amount of legroom you have in front of you. That's not what a Breeze Airways provides. It's an aircraft, it's an A220, and it provides three cabin-type aircrafts. So there's first-class seating, there's business-like seating, and there's coach seating. I'm not a short person, and I tell you, I can sit in the coach seat and cross my legs without doing a major body shift to be able to sit there with my legs crossed on a flight. So the, the seating is much more generous than what we even see with coach seating on Delta Airlines. So they've been a great partner with us. Just had a call with them earlier this morning, and we're looking at other opportunities as we get into next year. So it's all about, if you're going to Florida, and Michigan has a lot of Florida markets, a lot of Florida destinations that are available at competing airports, I need you to choose Lansing first, and I need you to push the Breeze Airways service, so we can add other destinations throughout the United States beyond the Florida markets that we currently have. I think one more thing I'll note even on Breeze, because I think this is an important piece, is aircraft availability. They put up order in, David Nealman, who's the CEO for Breeze Airways, started up JetBlue, started up Air Azul, started up WestJet, all of them strong, thriving airlines today. He's now running Breeze, and they put in an order last year for 90 A220s, so 90 brand-new aircrafts, one coming every month. So this truly creates an opportunity. As they bring in one additional aircraft every month, they're going to have to find homes for each of these aircrafts, right? So it does go back to the more destinations we have, the more frequency we have, creates opportunities for maybe a future aircraft base. What does that mean? 80 new jobs. Pilots, mechanics, flight attendant, ground crew. 80 new jobs would be created just with one aircraft being based here. And that's where I'm doing everything I can to push, but I can't fill up all the seats on these aircrafts. So that takes this community of region to use what we have before we look at other options. Are we on the Apple slide up there? Or are we on Breeze?
Breeze.
There we go. Apple Vacations got nonstop flights to Cancun, Punta Cana, and new this year, coming this year is Cabo. Breeze Airways, or Apple Vacations is providing service for 17 years coming this January. So years ago, when I was with the airport before in a previous role, in 2009, the Lansing Airport became a port of entry, gave us the opportunity to provide international clearance of a flight with over 19 people on the plane. So there's two airports in Michigan that have a federal inspection station that allows customs to clear over 19 people on a plane, and it's Detroit Metro and Lansing. So with that unique piece, within that, from June of, early June of 2009, by the end of, of June that year, we got Apple Vacations to announce their first season of Cancun flights. So their first year was just 15 flights to Cancun. We're over 60 flights now during this season. So it's during that peak time, that end of January to the first part of April, to be able to get you nonstop from here to Cancun three times a week, Punta Cana twice a week, and Cabo, again, as I mentioned, is new with nonstop flights on Fridays. So it's a once-a-week flight in and out. Now, that flight is replacing Montego Bay. So we've had Montego Bay for a couple of years. We saw the numbers see a little bit flat. There was also some travel warnings that came out of the federal government for Jamaica a couple years ago, started to impact some of the booking numbers. And so in, in coordination with Apple, we looked at multiple markets, and we're excited Cabo's in the mix. So if you're looking at your holiday vacation, I need you on those planes. To circle back around a little bit on some of the future aviation and the planning to support for future aviation, of course, that's Lansing Community College Maintenance Tech Program. Been in place for over 65 years. 65 years. They're one of 214 training programs in the United States. One of 214, and they rank in the top 10 for this aviation mechanics degree program. It's a feeder for Delta Airlines, so the last graduating class, I haven't got the numbers yet for this year, but the previous year's graduating class, six of those that graduated got hired by Delta Airlines down in Detroit. Multiple others got hired by another firm down by Kalamazoo Battle Creek area. And there's, the state of Michigan has ranked anywhere between the second busiest to the 10th with aerospace manufacturing. So we have to have the right manpower, beyond the engineers that we need to bring in to those aerospace manufacturing companies, we need to have the mechanics as well kind of tied into it. And the next slide, this is, this is, out of all the projects we've been able to accomplish in the last four years, I tell you, the Eaton-Risa partnership ranks extremely high on my list. When I came back out of the pandemic, and in the role that I'm blessed to be in, to really provide community outreach and engagement, one of those key things was the lack of people in the industry, a lack of pilots, right? We went through this pendulum where there was a tremendous amount of pilots. Regulations changed in DC back in 2013 that required additional hours to be able to fly in the right seat of an aircraft. When that happened, the industry did not respond to be able to address and increase the amount of training. But after the pandemic, when we had early retirees, as well as forced retirement with our baby boomers at the age of 65, you can no longer fly. So it's, it was one of those pieces that we had all these dynamics hitting us at the same time. So when I came back, it was one of those, we can sit back and say, woe is us, we're a small community airport, we're going to be one of the first ones impacted by the lack of pilots, or we figure out how we can be a part of making a change. And meeting with our university, with our colleges, with all of our schools, Eaton-Risa, Dr. Sean Williams came to the table and said, hey, let's, let's, let's talk about this more, let's see if we can make something happen. And we established an Aviation Career Institute. So this is our second year of the Aviation Career Institute. You'll see, they added some stats. These are fresh from this year's institute. So 36 students that came through the program, six of them were second-year programs. This is juniors and seniors in high school, any school within Ingham, Eaton, Clinton County, public school, private school. We've got kids from Fowler, we've got kids from Lansing Catholic, we've got kids from Holt. They're kind of all over that are tied into this program. So it's, again, juniors and seniors are eligible to come and start working on getting introduced to aviation. So we've got two students that have earned their private pilot's license. We have six that have earned their written exam endorsement. Six second-year students, meaning juniors last year, on, still were with us this past year. They have a remote pilot certification. 36 of the students, basically all of them, received their TSA General Aviation Security Awareness. You've got nine graduating seniors that are tied into last year's and this year's program, and you've got two of them going to Northwestern, three that are going to Eastern, one going to Borasque, and three are going to Lansing Community College. Looking ahead, we've already have secured multiple students for next year's program, and we're excited about another partnership with the Lansing Drone Soccer League, and they'll be involved in some of the organized competitions. So it's creating an opportunity for people in this area, whether you want to be a pilot, or whether you want to be maybe a certified drone flyer, or maybe you want to be a TSA. There's a lot of opportunities, and this is a great way for us to be able to introduce the, the career opportunities. On the next slide, we highlight two key players in our program, which is Crosswinds Aviation. They're doing the flight instructing. So even if you, as an adult, would like to get your private pilot's license, Crosswinds Aviation has aircrafts at the Lansing Airport, and they can set you up through training programs to be able to get your private pilot's license, as well as MSU-FCU. So Dr. Williams called me as we were first getting this kicked off, and a lot of the parents were going, Nicole, gosh, this is going to, this is going to cost us about $80,000 a year to be a pilot, right? So you can't use your fast-for dollars to pay for flight instructing and training. What can we do? Is there opportunities for loans or availability? So I called April at MSU-FCU and said, this is where our challenge is, she goes, let's get our teams together, we'll make this happen. So they now have a loan program that's established through MSU-FCU. So those students that are going through our program, once they complete a certified program, then the next round of funds become available as part of a loan project. Now, there's other alternatives, becoming a pilot than the full $80,000 that would take you to get to your 1,500 hours to fly in the right seat of an aircraft. If you have a bachelor's degree, it's 1,250. If you have an associate's degree, it just kind of goes down. And if you come out of the military, it is 750, 750 hours that are required. But a great way to be able to get introduced, have funding, have support, and it was more holistic approach to figuring out, how are we going to help support future in aviation. So the next slide shows some of the images, because this is housed at the second level of the airport. When I first came back to the airport, we had multiple spaces that were open and available, from loss of businesses because of the pandemic, consolidations, or just space that hadn't been leased out yet. We have, I have nothing available. My warehouse is full, my hangars are full, my space within the airport terminal is all leased out. So a lot of changes that have come into play, and a lot of great partners from the region coming together to say, hey, we can, we can expand, we can look at accelerating. And that's some of those key places that are there. The next slide highlights our cargo ramp expansion program. So when I joined back in 2021 in this role, one of those key pieces that we had on the shelf was focusing on our cargo development, and making sure that we had the infrastructure to support it. So as UPS continues to grow, they landed another contract with a post office here in the state of Michigan. We had to make sure that we've got the ramp space to accommodate these wide-body aircrafts, as well as all the tiered suppliers that are feeding them, anywhere from 12 to 20 aircrafts that are leaving first thing in the morning and late at night. So if you want to come out and watch aircrafts at about 4:00 in the morning, you're going to see a bunch of activity with aircrafts kind of coming and going from the cargo ramp. But this is one of those expansion projects we needed to move forward with. So we're excited, this project actually, to be true complete with seating just happened this year, but the main aspects of the project was completed back in '24. But again, this is due to congressionally-directed spending on the federal side for funds that we were able to secure for this project. Next slide just shows you some imagery of the expansion of the ramp, as well as an additional container pond. So any of the fluid that runs off the top of the ramps, when you're out getting on an airplane, you see them de-icing your plane in the winter. All that fluid runs down into a system, and then it gets diluted into a container pond before it leaves from the airport grounds. And with us expanding the cargo ramp, we also needed to expand the container pond accessibility, so we wouldn't overflow our existing pond. So you can see that on the bottom right-hand side of the image there. And there's also a cross-dock warehouse facility. The cargo ramp was built back far enough that we could maneuver cross-dock facilities. So if we could see additional consolidations or needs with UPS continue to grow, or maybe it's growth with Amazon, or with FedEx, other partners that are out there. We're meeting with everybody to highlight the fact that we are 90 minutes from 90% of the state's population, and our central location is key. So that UPS relationship, you can see on the next slide, some of their key routes that they're traveling to and from. So anything in the state of Michigan for next day comes in and out of the Lansing Airport. So did any of you or anybody in your family buy something yesterday, and you saw it at your door before you came here? That's, any of that next day came in and out of the Lansing Airport. So outside of Metro Detroit. And so the next slide shows you where those packages are going. And so those smaller 12 to 20 aircrafts, where they're going is throughout the state and neighboring state, taking products to and from all these communities, and it's all centrally located at the Lansing Airport. Next slide highlights, and this was one of those key things, when we started up our port-of-entry status in 2009, we needed to make sure that we had a holistic approach to what we needed for services. It wasn't just putting flights to Cancun. We also needed to make sure that we were able to process cargo internationally, as well as provide benefits for corporations. So foreign trade zone can provide some of those benefits as we're looking at increase in tariffs, an opportunity of being product into the state of Michigan, into a location within proximity around the Lansing Airport, and a manufacturing process can occur, storage process can occur, and that's some of the benefits of deferring or eliminating a tax or duty that's now available as part of our Foreign Trade Zone 275. So companies throughout the area, we bring in experts to help assess what it is that they're importing and exporting, what countries are bringing them from, to help determine if the documentation that's required to operate with an FTZ is beneficial for a company. And a little bit of volatility that we have right now with tariffs does create that opportunity for conversations to happen before anybody makes decisions about things. So if any of you guys are aware of anybody interested, I've got some great consultants within the state that can help provide guidance and direction to those companies. The next slide, I think I skipped one too far ahead. I can see part of it. Well, if you go to the slide just before this in your packet, there we go. This is an economic development grant that we went after, and we were able to secure $3.6 million for this project. This is in partnership Lansing Board of Water and Light. We're bringing utilities within a area of land at the airport, so we are truly build-ready. The city of Lansing has been great partners, as we've been looking at sewer designs and approvals and projects along the way. So design is going on right now. We should have this approved, move forward with construction next year for this project. The next slide highlights the designated area. So if you think of where the UPS operation is today, if you're familiar with that, right on Port Lansing, it's just south of the UPS operation, is the land that's being a development. Some may be aware of Nile Wave. They've got a location that's located here at the airport, their airport campus, as well as that center map building is actually a warehouse, our airport, Port Lansing Warehouse. Next slide, roads. So on the federal government side, we receive standard funds for airports for various projects, runways, taxiways, aprons, so aircrafts can operate and maintain. One of those areas, we receive no funding outside of the section that's right in front of the terminal for roads. So we were able to secure $9.4 million. We're under design right now for roads with the intent we'll be moving forward with construction next year. So once we have a little bit more of a timeline of how we're phasing this, and also partnering with our neighbors, because Clinton County is also working on a road project with the airport road, will probably be in construction at similar times. So we'll be phasing this, so we have that easy flow east and west of the airport and the operations for our customers within that region. The next slide, Beta Technologies. I don't think it's up yet, is it? Oh, it is? Beta Technologies?
Or Trade.
Okay. Okay. So Beta Technologies, they manufacture electric aircrafts. So you think of a fixed-wing aircraft, a standard airplane, it's powered by five battery packs that's underneath the aircraft. They're manufacturing these aircrafts in Burlington, Vermont today. They have over 850 employees that work for this organization, but they are also manufacturing electric units. So think of your Tesla chargers, that you're charging your, your automobile. You've got to have basically a charger for your aircraft. We worked with the state of Michigan with MDOT and MEDC in securing $2.6 million for Beta Technologies. They're bringing in a charging unit in Lansing, Traverse City, Holland and Will Run. We did send an invitation out to all of you that will have an aircraft here, October, or July 30th, at 9:30 out at the Lansing Airport. We'll be able to demo the electric aircraft. It'll do a couple of flights around, but in addition, it'll show you how they're using the electric charger unit that's now in construction. It'll be finished next week. This charging unit will be made available. Thing to note, this charging unit works not just for an electric aircraft and multiple versions of electric aircrafts, it also works for like an electric vehicle. So at some airports, they've got like Ford Lightnings that they're using right now within their operations or maintenance departments. They're using the beta chargers to charge their vehicles as well, because that's inside the fence, inside the operations of the airport itself. So we're excited about this partnership. This is something I've been working on for the last three years, in making sure that we are part of the forefront of what will happen with future air mobility, and making sure that we have the infrastructure to support some of these efforts down the road. Let me note, you're not having an electric aircraft that's showing up in your backyard tomorrow. This is, this is a process. This is FAA still needs to approve and vet the, the beta aircraft. We have the same thing with other manufacturing aircrafts that are, are in neighboring states. But this charging unit will work even for those other aircraft types down the road. Some of the investors for Beta Technologies includes UPS, the Army, the Air Force, the healthcare industry. So they're looking at not just the fixed-wing aircraft, but the EVTOLs. So helicopter, airplane, all-in-one. They've manufactured one of those aircrafts, and will be looking at moving forward for approval from FAA to continue to manufacture those in the future. Coming soon. Okay. CADA. One of the issues we have is not enough taxi companies and services that are available with Ubers and Lifts, the rideshare-type opportunities. And CADA came to the table saying, hey, I think we can establish some programs that would provide services to and from the airport. And we designated a handful of locations on campus that are more student-focused, but also areas on campus that are more visiting-type focused. So Kellogg Center, The Graduate, The Marriott. This service is now available to and from the Lansing Airport, and they're increasing their app capabilities, so people can actually pre-schedule any of those. So maybe you've got a guest that's in town, or family that's in town, staying at The Marriott or The Graduate, you can pre-schedule this pickup to happen to get you out to the Lansing Airport. So more details to come on the pre-scheduled system. That should be up probably the end of August is their timeframe, and we'll get that out as soon as we can. But this service is in play today, so you can use it already. Next slide, we're getting to the end, master plan update. It's really looking at the big picture of the airport, where we're at, what we're doing, how we're moving forward with runways, taxiways, land use. Over the next couple of slides, I'll skip to the next, this very last one here. So you can see the yellow, inside the yellows, all the airport land here at the Lansing Airport. Lot of green space on the north side of the airport. So we were able to work with the city, as well as with LEAP and MEDC, and secure funds to start doing environmental assessment on our property on the north side. So we're going to think about growth and opportunities to diversify revenues. One of those key players, as I mentioned earlier, is land development. We've got to make sure that we've got the infrastructure in place to support it. And it'll be a long process to get there, but we have to determine, what, what do we have for wetlands, what are those clear spots for us to potentially look at for utilities and future development there. Would love any questions that you guys might have.
Okay, does anyone have any questions at this time?
Well, I don't see any question. I have one.
Okay.
The entryway.
Yes.
To the airport right now.
Yeah.
It is, and it's not the airport's fault, but it's particularly sad. You've got a, you know, Burger King, that's not pretty. Is there plans to beautify that, that corridor coming in? Because, you know, it's like our front door to Lansing.
It is, and it's such a concern. So you've got, you do have a Grand River Corridor group that's working on- So, you've got, you do have a Grand River Corridor group that's working on some of that development from the airport down to MLK. It's too bad that during a period of time, I wasn't at the airport to have been aware, but the property there on the corner that you're referring to and the one that butts up right behind it, were both open and available for purchase. They have been purchased, I have contacted the landowner, and there's a considerable difference to what they paid and what is being asked for that property. Because there's easements and utilities along that roadway, there's some limitations on what we can do. If I could, I'd put up a fence, I'd put up trees, I would hide all of that mess right there, because it does deter the entrance in and out of our, you know, state's capital. The other piece to it is we look at improvements that you will see is going to be the boulevard, the Port Lansing and the boulevard with road improvements, sidewalks, lighting, signage. In addition, we did secure funding for terminal design. And so, our old master plan had us actually building a terminal on the north side of the airport. And so, as we're working through our master plan update, the feasibility of doing something of totally moving your terminal and your parking and the infrastructure that's tied into it doesn't seem like a good use of funds. So, we're pulling back, we did an assessment on our existing terminal and determined that there's some inefficiencies with some of the utilities within the building, but there's enough substance there for us to be able to make some major renovations to what we have today. So, as we talk about the beautifying the space, as we come and go from the airport, the terminal building is one of those key things, and we will be going out to bid probably the end of September, first part of October for design firms. And from there, it'll probably take us a good year and a half, two years, to work on the design of what would be our future terminal and start working and securing funds to help pay for some of those projects.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any further questions? I don't see any, so we appreciate your time and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
All right. We are going to move on to item six, which is discussion action on resolution, the CDBG Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2526. And I believe we have Mr. Van Fossen here to present on that. In Raleigh, you know the routine, green light, and go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Council President Cost. I am here, if you recall, a couple of weeks ago, we received, you received a presentation with my colleagues, Aaron Butendorf, the manager for the Community Development Division, and Doris Witherspoon, our senior planner. It's their annual presentation on our annual action plan that allows us, with your support, to offer the entitlement dollars the city receives on an annual basis from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. If you recall from that presentation, though, HUD had not released the definitive numbers for any local communities at that time. They have since released those, and so, we updated the resolution that you have before you tonight with those exact numbers. The disappointing news I have to report is there is a 2.6% reduction in our annual award that we're getting this year. I don't have a lot of insight into that, it's a very formulaic process that HUD goes through in terms of deciding how much the city of Lansing or, for all that, be any community gets. I would say, prior to then taking any questions from you all, I can at least confidently say that reduction doesn't have anything to do with the current messaging we are monitoring on our end in terms of the complete elimination of CDBG, and that's being discussed right now at the federal level, that's separate than this reduction. Again, we truly think this reduction is formulaic, that ties into population and a handful of other factors. Anything greater than a complete elimination certainly will work with this body in terms of next steps. But at this point, we have the definitive numbers before you and would be asking for your support.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. Van Fossen? Councilman Hussein?
Just real quick, in terms of the 2.6% reduction, so is that proportioned across all three programs?
Correct.
Okay.
It is. The largest cut would be CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, that's the largest amount we get. The other two sources would be HOME, H-O-M-E, and then Emergency Solutions Grant or ESG commonly. So, all three received a slight reduction.
Okay. Do we have any further questions? Seeing none, Vice President Carter.
Thank you. I will make a motion for the Resolution for Community Development Block Grant, Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2025 through 2026 Funding Allocations.
Okay, we have proper motion in place, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes unanimously. Thank you for being down here tonight, Mr. Van Fossen. And that is it for our agenda, we are adjourned at 6:35.